That I wanted to have touch on a couple of issues. Seth Jensen is here and wanted to address a letter that's going to be going out in the mail today, probably received by some folks tomorrow or the next day related to water quality violation notice. So Seth, do you mind addressing that?
Thank you, City Manager. So yes, middle of December, the City of Auburn, and John, if you could approach the other podium just to provide a little bit of technical support. We received a water quality sample back from our contract lab that put our annual running average of disinfection byproducts just over the allowable limit, the threshold of eighty parts per billion. It changed, that number changed our average over the last four quarters to eighty-one parts per billion, which is not a good thing, but it's not a water quality crisis at the moment. If it were, the Department of Health and the City of Auburn would have issued notification to all of its residents, all of its customers within 24 hours of a major violation or an issue. So this is, although not a major water quality violation, it's something that requires the City of Auburn to follow up with its residents and provide them with the information associated with that violation as a way to be fully transparent about their drinking water that they receive at the tap and utilize every day. John's here tonight to provide maybe a little bit of more background into what disinfection byproducts are. At a high level, they are formed in a distribution system where there is free chlorine, which we have to use. We have to use a disinfectant, I should say. And we use sodium hypochloride, and that has free chlorine that comes into contact with organic material. And when it comes into contact with organic material over time and potentially even at elevated temperatures, it forms these disinfection byproducts more readily and faster. So we've talked a lot about disinfection byproducts with council now because a lot of our customers and customers that are further out where the retention of that water is even longer than the City of Auburn's retention time are already in violation and more of a significant violation. So the trends are not good, but at the same point in time, we have things that we can do at this point as a community to improve that water quality, lower our disinfection byproducts, and get back to the place that we need to be. One of those, and I mentioned briefly, is that idea of free chlorine as a disinfectant would be to utilize a disinfectant that does not have chlorine as a free molecule to disinfect. And we've been looking at other communities that are using different types of zebra muscle control, which is a disinfectant to keep zebra muscles from forming at their intake, as well as different types of disinfectant before the water's pumped out into the distribution system. So we're hopeful that there's technologies out there that we'll be able to take advantage of like our neighboring communities have. Bolton Point, for instance, is one that did back in 2012. We've reviewed their reports and looked at some of the data that they've done, and it's promising, as well as the Village of Waterloo. They completely converted their disinfection system and have had excellent returns on their disinfectant byproducts in their system. The thing that we're still grappling with and trying to better understand is the cost of that type of system, right? We currently use sodium hypochloride. Traditionally, that's been relatively easy to get and relatively inexpensive. It's tripled in the last year in its cost, and my guess is many of these other chemicals have gone up substantially as well. But all of that weighs in to better understand our next steps. The first and immediate step that we'll be taking to deal with this is hydrant flushing. That's typically step one of any community is they just increase their level of flushing within the distribution system and set up a schedule and follow that schedule to recycle and bring in new water to the extremities of the city, thus lowering our disinfection byproducts. So tonight, I have the letter, and I emailed this letter to you, that we will be sending out to all of residents, and it's actually already available on our website. And it has a lot of detail in it that is required by EPA and the DOH. And that's exactly what we use. We just took their exact language that they require and put it into a public notice. But we'll be getting some phone calls, and you might be getting some phone calls. And if you're not comfortable answering the questions that you're receiving from the public, just direct them to our filtration plant. And if we're not comfortable answering the questions that we're receiving from the public, we'll forward them onto the Department of Health. If anything health-related that the residents ask about, we're not doctors, we are not specialists, we need to stay in our lane with respect to that, and as a result, forward anything like that onto the Health Department or onto their own physician potentially. Because, you know, over a long period of time and high, high levels of disinfection byproducts in the water, there are health concerns, and that's why we're doing what we're doing here today. So it's available on the website. It will be mailed to them, mailed to all residents, all customers. The other thing, and I'll let John talk on this a little bit, is how do we measure and where do we come up with this idea of measuring disinfection byproducts? Maybe a little bit more about what they are. So I'll turn it over to John.
Okay. So you see the chart here in the four locations on the left that we do disinfection byproducts: New York Street, that's New Core, 35 Bradley's wastewater, 350 H. N. C.'s DPW, and 311 North Division's Atlanta. Briefly, how those came about is we've been doing disinfection byproducts for about 25 years. We were doing four locations in the early 2000s up until about 2010. As part of this, the state had us do eight other locations in one year. So we had all twelve of these locations. And what they had us do after we looked at all the data is they wanted to take the four worst locations for these numbers. So New York Street and the North Division were the worst THM violators, and the Bradley Street and not violators, but they were the worst numbers at the time, running annual averages. And the Bradley Street and Genesee Street were the worst HA5 numbers. So that's how those four locations were settled on. As you can see, the only location that is over the 80 threshold is York Street. The other ones are all fine, as you can see by the running annual average. That actually 84 isn't 80, if you go back to the end. If Seth could click on, I don't know if you can back to the 2022 there at bottom tab. So there's the actual current averages right now on the left there, or on the right, I'm sorry, currently. The next page, 2023, we'll put, when we do the sampling in February, we'll add that number into that 2023 page, we'll get a number. So if we get a 67 or lower at York Street in February, we'll be under the 80. I think we'll be close. Generally, your third and fourth quarter number, or fourth quarter to first quarter numbers are, there's anomaly there from 2021 to 2022. They want to, you know, there was a big gap there, but in the other years past, they've been pretty close. And our fourth quarter this year is a 70. So I have a feeling we'll be somewhere in that area. As Seth mentioned, we're going to work on a flushing program. We're going to sit down next Tuesday and pump that, submit that to the Health Department, get that started here very soon. And the other thing we've been working on at the plant is the amount of disinfectant we use. Now, we want to make sure we obviously use enough to get all the disinfection we need and keep it residual in the system. But we want to also get to a point where if we can cut that back and help with formation, we're going to do that. So we watch what's collected in the system. We watch what we're putting in at the entry point. So we're working those two things simultaneously to try and work on bringing these numbers down, you know, here in the short. It's a balance, you know. One of the things, you see that third quarter 107 number. During the summer, we had some, we had a couple spots in the city that, you know, had some very low to no residuals at that point. So we, you know, you up your disinfection to try and get your residual to that point. We didn't have any bacteriological issues. We tested those areas, the water was fine, but now you're putting more disinfectant into a system, and you get more disinfection byproducts. So we're trying to find that balance of that. And over the years, these numbers have all, you know, slightly come up, you know, we weren't, I didn't think we were coming to a point where we were going to hit an 80 anytime soon, but this was a discussion we had started to have even in the last year, that, okay, these are slowly trending up. A lot of the averages have been, you know, in the 50s. You started to see the 60s, where years ago, they might have been in the 30s and 40s or 40s and 50s. So we have started to see some climb. But that 107, that number for our average is going to hang around until August. So whatever we get, that 107's in there until we get an August. So that, we could, we could stay over 80 for the next few quarters. That's a distinct possibility as well. So we'll have to see. We're going to work like heck to try and get that down.
If, if next quarter, we come in and our running average is over 80, John, it's by understanding we have to reissue another public notification?
I believe we will, yeah. We'll probably just have to go out the same thing.
Just to kind of manage expectations?
Yeah.
A little bit.
Like I said, I think we'll be close. Like I said, most years, those numbers are, the fourth quarter, first quarter numbers have been pretty close generally. So like I said, I think maybe with the flushing and some of the work we're really doing with the plant here will help us get it down. And we're going to try to be diligent to do as much as we can, you know. There's, in a sense, you know, you have to chlorinate, you have to disinfect. So you want to, you know, we're trying to balance that out.
You have a question, Counselor?
A lot of people don't understand them numbers. I mean, let's get to the point, is the water safe to drink?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I drink it, I mean. It's one, you got to remember too, it's one location at one specific spot. It's clear that these are the worst places when we did the testing from years ago. These are going to be your highest numbers.
So the areas you noted, so New York Street, Bradley, those are collection sites?
Yes, those are the places we take the samples.
Where does the disinfection happen at the treatment plant?
There's, for parts, part of the month, there's actually disinfection that starts in the intake for zebra muscle control.
Okay.
Before zebra muscles, you never had to put that there. So now you've added another level where that chlorine is reacting. You got another mile-long pipe from the upper station of the plant that's now is reacting and starting your disinfection byproduct, you know, byproduct beginning there. Instead of, you know, before that happened, it used to be in the clear well at the plant for it, went to the on-site reservoir and out to the city.
So you're seeing, so is it the disinfectant byproduct, you're saying it's a result of the zebra muscle trying to control that product?
Well, it's part of, I'm just saying, you would have, even if we didn't have that, we would have disinfection byproducts in the system, yeah. But you're starting now the reaction of the bleach in the water with the organics in the water at a sooner spot than you would have before, sort of beginning to form them at a quicker time.
When did that start to happen?
It's been, it's 20 years ago, 20-plus years ago, 25 maybe, yeah.
But what I'm noticing is that the numbers ramping up quite rapidly in recent years.
Yeah.
Is that a fair assessment based on?
Fair assessment. If you look back, like if you see Seth go like the 2021 there.
There's 19.
Yeah. So the third quarter, you notice, that's the August numbers with warmer water and stuff like that. That's always going to be your higher quarter. So you're generally, you know, you would see some of those quarters with some high numbers. And you're seeing, you know, those, like I said, the 107 is just that, that's, you know, that's 20 something higher than, parts per billion higher than we've ever had before in a location.
Yeah. So it looks like based on the samples, the numbers we're getting there, we're looking like 60s, 50s, 40s, 30s. But, you know, we, that 107 is quite high.
Yes.
Now, I know the Board of Health sent a letter to the Governor and had concern about the trihalomethanes along with a chart that showed the microsystems in the raw water. Is it safe to say that there is a direct relationship between your job to minimize the microsystems in the drinking water, which is a, you know, half of a drinking water half, and what's beginning to happen now with the THMS?
THMS.
Would you say that that is, again, based on empirical, anecdotal?
I would say yes, based on 25 years or so I've been up there. I mean, the lake has obviously changed. You're seeing some different things. And you add all this together, you get this mix, and I, yeah, it plays a part. I firmly believe that.
And that's, because I know that Sam, you and Seth are doing like everything you can to protect people's drinking water. And this, you know, has come back from the lab saying that we're out of compliance, and that, obviously, that we need to take that very seriously. You know, my role, I'm looking at this from, you know, September, October of 2016, which this was predicted was going to happen. Like if we didn't address, if the state, I should say, if the state didn't address Owasco Lake in a meaningful way, this was going to happen. So, you know, I feel, and I talked to my colleagues a few weeks ago, I'm working on a resolution that speaks to what's happening to our water supply. And you're right, it's not a, this particular is not a crisis. Why?
It's a piece of evidence.
But it's, but it can lead to a crisis. And the red flag from 2016 has led us to another red flag in 2022. And, you know, I think, you know, we were the first to have the microsystems at such a, such a level, and then all other surrounding communities started to have that same issue. You know, I really think, you know, since this is happening to us in such a way, you know, I think it's, at least from my perspective, council's obligation to inform the state how much we have done to try to point to this issue. And, you know, I really believe that New York State needs to get serious about this, about protecting water bodies, because it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. And we can't, as much as, you know, I know what you guys are doing is right, but this is a problem that's bigger than you, than what we can do here. And, you know, so I just want to commit to you that I will, I'm going to do what, we're going to do what we can so that the state can fulfill their obligation and EPA can fulfill their obligation for, say, public drinking water. And I thank you for doing what you can, but you're given such a difficult task because of where the lake has been let to go for so many years. So I'm not surprised that this is happening. I'm glad that we're at that point where we can do something and really, you know, we can advocate again. But yeah, this is just another red flag, just like the one from 2016, and, you know, we need to do something about it. But thank you for being on top of it and doing what you can to address it.
One of the things that came to mind when you were talking about the resolution that you're working on, and I think we could do this, is to provide, you know, a chart similar to what you saw from the County Health Department of our reportable running average numbers, going back as far as we have data to provide, and just see what has happened at those sample locations as far as what our running averages, the numbers have done historically up till the point we are.
Because it's like, it's a red flag for me. I look at it, I'm like, so we can't just, you know, it's that thing where the enough, there is, there's a reason why there's thresholds, because even if we go over one, like, step, that's enough to really, like, have the amount of health rate. And that's, you know, we don't want it to ever get any worse. We need to, we need to make sure that the Governor knows that, like, we need help. We've been asking for help for a long time. And, you know, just can't stress it enough. But I, I'm glad that there are public servants like you that are, like, holding down the fort while we've been trying to get the state to do their job.
Counselor, can I?
Excuse me, Yelset, Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor, can I?
Thank you. Just for context, when was, I know-ish, when was the last time we had to send a letter like this out?
For disin, never for disinfection byproducts, never.
That's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on something that Counselor Cuddy was saying in regards to staff and the work that they're doing. As I mentioned to my colleagues in session about two months ago, I visited the water filtration plant. And when we sat down, one of the questions I asked Mr. Jensen, Mr. West, and Mr. Granato, what are the concerns, right? We know habs are a concern, but what are the concerns? And this was one of the things that came up. So it's not in response to this. You all were already working on that. You saw the writing on the wall. You saw that this was coming down. So I just, again, I want to reiterate and give you all credit, and I want the public to know that they are in good hands, that you are doing everything you possibly can. In regards to different types of treatment, what are we looking at for a timeframe to switch?
So I think an immediate timeframe is the flushing program. And that traditionally in communities like Auburn that have gone through a process like this, that has worked. But we really want to take this other disinfection process seriously and fully vet it. We've visited the plants already. We'd have to go out for an RFP, request for pricing or a bid. We've sat with the Health Department and described a little bit about what we're thinking, and they seem to be in general support of moving in this direction. The timeframe could be as short as six months or it could take, you know, a year or two. I think with the flushing program hitting right away, I just, I don't like rushing into technology because that's when we make mistakes. And we want to fully vet and understand the fiscal implications of this process, too. There's not a lot of vendors out there that produce this type of disinfectant. So to a certain extent, we would be locked in to specific vendor, you know, a vendor. So that kind of always makes you a little bit nervous because they then control the pricing. But these communities have seen good results and good reductions by making the switch. So water quality is paramount and utmost importance is public health. So we're going to, we're going to move forward as, you know, as diligently as we can, but I can't speculate as to an exact timeframe.
No, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask you to put your, you know, your professional opinion online and speculate.
Maybe a year, maybe within the next year.
And the reason that's a concern for me, and I don't want you to anyway think I'm questioning your approach, because I'm not. I think when people on this side of the bar start questioning the experts on the other side of the bar, that's when we get into trouble. But my concern is, there's a, there seems to be a direct correlation with the microsystem chart that was shared from the Department of Health with the disinfectant byproduct issue that we're having now. We've seen since 2016, every year, the microsystem levels have doubled.
Right.
That's fact.
Yeah.
My concern is, will the flushing be enough if that number from last year doubles again this year? So that's why I asked that question. And I'm not, I'm not-
That I don't know. Do you guys know the answer to that with respect to formation and?
I'm not even looking for an answer, Mr. Jensen. I'm just, I'm putting my concern out there.
Sure.
Because I'm very concerned. We've seen that, and it's a steep trajectory. It's not gradual. It's, it's shooting right up, you know, as fast as it can. So I just wanted to go on record and ask that question. And again, I appreciate everything you're doing. I trust the three of you completely, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here and to explain this, not only to us but to the public.
Sure. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yelset, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor. I, one more question. So what year do we have the powder activated carbon installed?
2017.
2017. Is there a way to determine how much powder activated carbon takes out microsystem and how much the disinfectant? Or is it kind of like, is there a science to like that? So that would be my, because again, like, we spent $20, or like the state used $20 to address an issue, but now there's another issue because we need to increase the amount of disinfectant byproducts. So my question is, is the powder activated carbon enough to reduce the current levels of microsystem? I mean, this is a fair question-
No, that's a great question.
-to the state to be able to answer that question. But do you have any kind of empirical or first glance data that you could provide?
Do you want me?
I can help.
You did say it right, yeah.
So in 2016, we looked at options, right, for microsystem removal. And when we did that, we fell on this powder activated carbon system as the best stopgap, short-term solution to dealing with microsystems. When we did that, we studied its removal effectiveness up to 10 parts per billion, and we're seeing the numbers above 10 parts per billion in our raw water. That's very concerning to the Water Department and to municipal utilities. So we're in the process right now of developing a scope of service to go out and get competitive, you know, pricing and qualifications from the best firms available to enhance that study from the 10 parts per billion that they did in the lab in 2016 to maybe 100 parts per billion, which was unheard of at the time that we did it. That 10 was a conservative number, so we need to be ultra-conservative so that we're not doing this every year. At the same time, that RFP is going to include language that would support an engineer assisting the City of Auburn in evaluating intake extension to avoid the seasonal microsystem, which is, you know, the kind of the last thing we want to do because it's the most costly. But at the end of the day, I feel like 20, 30, we're not, we're in business forever, right? That's the hope, is 100 years from now, whatever we decide today will still be working and working well. So going out as deep as we possibly can may not be a bad idea.
Mr. Jensen, I totally agree. I mean, think about when the type of way issue was happening from the, you know, waters from Owasco Lake, that that's why we have the slow sand because of public health reasons. So, you know, we're thinking ahead. And I don't think, I'm lying, asking it, like, for the RFP to do 100, or 100 parts per billion, because it would have been unheard. But that's the trajectory, Governor. I mean, the public saw the graph of, of, for microsystems. They would understand the concern. So I, you're already at kind of what should be happening. And again, I'm just glad that we're doing that. But there's a lot of questions that we need, a lot of, not questions, but we need to really have a statement, make sure that we're providing it with all the data that we're getting and saying, just basically laying out like this isn't work. You know, I mean, something's got to happen, and it's got to happen quickly. So, but thank you.
Yep.
Ask for a tiny question, either of you. So, Mr. Jensen, you just referred to the charcoal filter process as, it was 2016, 17, 16, as the best stopgap, short-term solution? At that time, what was the long-term, what did we hope would be the long-term solution?
Lake quality improvement.
Okay.
Top-down approach. Lake quality improvement, top-down approach to water quality in the lake. But it took a long, it's taken a long time potentially to get to this point. We need, we may need to think out a little bit further.
Thank you.
In response to your question, Counselor Kent, in every ask, every communication that went from this body to the state of New York, it was, this is a stopgap measure, this is a short term. The long term to solve this problem is to improve the quality of this lake. And everything we've done since then, rules and regs, which you've been involved in, nine element plan, those have been, the push for TMDL, those have been all tools to try and get to that point. Unfortunately, we know what's going on with the rules and regs.
And that's, that's a good, you know, dovetail into what I sent all of you this afternoon. I emailed the Council, the Mayor, City Manager, Corporation Council, and the Director of Municipal Utilities, a draft resolution that begins to address the source water problems. So if it's okay for the Council, I'd like to bring that to the floor in the work session of next week and discuss the resolution and kind of have it tightened up for, tighten up for the, for the two weeks for the voting session. And then that way, we can, the state budget is in the works. So we're hoping that Owasco Lake can be in on their minds when they vote the state.
Can I just add one thing, Mayor? I'm, I know I'm.
Sure, because I have one question before, but go ahead, please.
Yeah, you're always so patient to wait till last.
The last, the last one speaking, everyone remembers.
Yeah, that's right, smart.
That's why I say words, yeah.
So, so today at Kuwait County Water Quality Management Agency, our public meeting, the agency voted on developing and writing a direct letter to the governor's office in support of expediting the watershed rules and regulations as they've currently stalled at the state level, and also to endorse and support the other county entity, which is the Board of Health, who put together a very strong, pointed letter to the governor as well. So the county water quality agency, WQMA, was in support of doing that. So that will be happening as well, just so you guys know.
More noise, I can hear you.
No, it's a little more noise, yeah.
So, Mr. Jensen or Mr. West, looking at, looking at the chart here, the four, the four, New York Street, Bradley, Genesee, and North Division, in my mind, I'm visualizing that is the lowest point, furthest point from the filtration. I don't want to use the term cherry pick for using those four, but are there other sites that are just as hazardous, or a lot of it depend on the elevation and the distance?
So that, being the farthest points in the system, that's the, that's the longest point. So the disinfectant and the organics in the water have the most time to react with each other, so your farthest points are going to be your worst points. And that's why those, we as the city did choose them. Like I said, we had 12 spots in the early 2000s to around 2010 that were sampled. We sat with the Health Department, there was criteria, this is, these are the four sites because of the numbers that were seen at those sites when they were sampled beforehand, so.
I didn't want you to think, I thought you were cherry picking, but just my old fireman's helmet on, thinking, going to get the best pressure down there versus the East End for all the obvious reasons.
No.
And it's, and the water has more time to sit in the line.
Yes.
Between point A and point B.
Yeah. So it's a reaction between the disinfection, the organics in the water that create these disinfection byproducts. So the longer they're in contact with each other, the higher the number, and that, you know, the farther away it's going to be, the higher the number.
Back to you, Mr. Jensen, if you have anything else? Counselors all set with our guest?
Thank you.